Pledge of allegiance to the US flag by Councilmember Craig Pearson, followed by the Texas pledge by Assistant City Manager Matt Bates. Then I will lead the invocation. If you would please rise.
Going in the place of the US flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next pledge.
Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
You bow with me? Y'all, we just thank you for the summer that you're providing us. Thank you for the rains that we've had this spring. We just pray for those that work the land as they start to do the harvest and work that this summer. Also pray for all the schools, UMHB, just releasing and having commencement this last week. All the other colleges and high schools that are wrapping up and as kids enter the summer, we just pray that everyone will remain safe. Thank you for all those that work in this fine city, those volunteers, the citizens, and also those that lead. I just pray that will continue to guide and direct our steps. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. We will now call this meeting to order at 5:31. Item one on the, or item two on the agenda is public comments. If anyone wishes to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda, now is the time that you can do so. Yes.
I do want to make a couple remarks. This is gonna be tough, but I wanted to share just as a testament to the Belton community and the folks that we have, even our council candidates and opponents. My opponent was the first one to give me a hug on election day. And I lost my father that morning on election day. And to each of you up here, Sam and Amy, Luke, even Clinton. Clinton and Luke toured on my tent on the day I found out that my dad wasn't coming home. And just a testament to just the people we have in Belton. And just wanted to say thank you to everybody for your support and encouragement and moving forward. So.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Daniel. We know that's tough. We're going to continue to pray for you and your families. You've continued to process that. Anyone else wish to address the council? Alright. There may no others. We will close public comments and we will now do the presentation of council pay for May 2024 to May 2025.
I know this is the day y'all have been waiting for.
It's on the calendar every year. Can't wait.
Guess what day it is?
Payday.
Go ahead, Chris. Oh, that's right. That's right. And one more time.
So today's payday for the city council, they get a whole dollar a year for all the work they do. So go ahead and open your envelope. This is what we got this year. I know this paper wine bottle, I'm not holding the actual wine, but it represents something worth recognizing. Just like a vineyard's first bottle, it symbolizes care, patience, and the kind of hard work that starts long before anything is ready to pour. And honestly, that's a perfect way to honor the work our Belton city council members do. Your service isn't always visible, but it's always valuable. You spend hours listening, planning, and making decisions that directly shape the future of our community. You navigate challenges, you weigh tough choices, and you work to make Belton better for all of us. Quietly, consistency, and with real commitment. So today, this paper wine bottle is our little way of raising a toast to you. It might be symbolic, but the appreciation behind it is very real. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your service to Belton, and cheers to you.
Thank you.
If you, do you have to pay taxes on the dollar if you never spend it? But I'm, all mine are just sitting in the, I think you have to. Yeah, the minimums. Yeah. Yeah, just like our service.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
I was able to present to Miller Heights, not Miller Heights, Southwest Elementary about city. And so they asked a lot of questions and they didn't ask how much I got paid or the mayor got or the city council. So I said, you need to ask how much the mayor gets paid. They're like, how much? It's like a dollar. And they're like, no. Like, they were like enraged that we only get a dollar. I said, yeah. But, yeah, so anyway, thank you very much. Alright, next is consider an ordinance canvassing the May 3rd general special election and returns. It's Amy.
Alright, so tonight we are canvassing the returns of the general special elections that we held on May 3rd, 2025. For council member place five, it was Ty Taggart with 388 votes and Daniel Booker with 447 votes. For council member place six, Luke Kneel-Potts received 543 votes. Clinton Bailey received 320. Stephanie O'Banion is in council member place seven, and it was a a close one with her. She receives 388 votes. And then on the special election side, we had a charter amendment to make the municipal court become a municipal court of record by fixing the terms of the judges. So we had to amend our charter in order to be able to do that. So there were 700 votes in favor of that change and 130 votes against that change. In total, we had 603 voters in person, 10 by mail, 267 on election day. We had five provisionals, and basically what that means is either you're not signed up, you're not registered to be a voter, or you filled it out too late, or you know, people think they live in Belton, but they really live in Temple or Morgan's Point. So when we get provisional ballots, we send them to the county. The county goes through their registrar and determines whether they're valid or not. And then the early voting ballot board reviews them and makes a decision on whether to count them or not. So the three that were rejected, two of them didn't live in the city, and the other one did a change of address less than 30 days from the election. So those three were not counted. And we had a total number of voters of 885. We have well over 12,000 registered voters. While this is a better turnout than we've had in some years past, it's still pretty poor. You know, the more we can get the word out. I know there was a lot of word out this year because there were signs everywhere, but I don't know how to answer what it's going to take to get people.
Yeah.
So before you tonight, you have a, an ordinance that will canvass the election and make it legitimate, official. That's the part I'm looking for. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
Any comments?
I just wanted to have it at the 200 that didn't.
Well, you know, can't win them all.
Move, we approve the ordinance canvassing the May 3rd, 2025 election.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance canvassing the May 3rd, 2025 election. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes 6-0. Alright, next item is to administer the oath of office to the newly elected council members. Mr. Messer. It's your time. Do you want him to stand up here or come down on the floor? Okay, gotcha.
I'll try. It always my honor to have the opportunity to swear here in all the council members who have their pay offices. Every year, you know, we do this, and I just keep thinking, when I go down the wrong path someday, that the citizens have never failed us by running for election, and the citizens have never failed us by not electing awesome people. The congratulations that's up to put their names out there and win successfully, that how this process works. Didn't say any better than that. That will get about that way. That is a special place, that special council has always done what was best for the city of Belton, not for themselves, and for anyone else. That don't have messengers in the city. That means that if each one of you, if you have to me say your name, or I say my name, it's great. It's my honor to swear you. I am Taylor Messer.
I am Taylor Bigger. Do solemn swear. Do solemn swear that I will faithfully execute the deuce of the office of city council member, of the office of city council member of the state of Texas, of the state of Texas, and the city of Belton. And will do and will to the best of my ability and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, the Constitution and laws of this state, and of the United States.
Alright, so we're doing something a little different this year. We're going to convene into executive session as we reorganize. Since we do not have direct election of the different offices within the council, we select the mayor and the mayor pro tem. We also have to, we'll also, in part of this, talk about the new court of record and appointing those. And so we will be taking action, and I know a lot of you are here for that action. And so I'm not sure how long we'll be convened, but we'll be recessed for a little bit and we'll come back. And so I'm going to read this into the record. And so y'all make yourself comfortable. Item six is executive session pursuant to the provision of the open meetings law, chapter 551, government code Vernon's Texas code annotated in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.074 Personnel Matters. And item seven, executive session pursuant to the provision of the open meetings law, chapter 551, government code Vernon, Texas code annotated in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.071 Consultation with the Attorney. Alright, we will be back shortly.
Yeah. But so much. I mean, that's the same. Thank you. Thanks so much. Sorry to interrupt you. Yeah. They might. Well, it was a good one. Yeah. If we want to. I think it's for the people. Yes. It's what they're really like. This is such. Yeah. So they're right. So. So. And he's there. Maybe. Explain. It's hard to block. So. Yeah. It's nice. Or. I'm not. He's doing the. Now.
Yes. Next time, let's move this to the back of the meeting.
They have to have an action on it. That's why it's.
I know, but like you got a bunch of other people here with all their issues. So it just seems unfair that they have to wait while the council is off doing their thing.
It's unusual.
You need.
All right. Long day.
Yeah.
Today was.
Good. Wow. Wow. Y'all are still here. My wife um just um resigned from she's been on the uh belt of school board and uh so she's she's tender her resignation. And so they had some sweet thing in the meeting and so she sent the the link to listen to or watch the school board meeting. She said fast forward to hour four. It's like hour four. It's like she got home like eleven thirty. Anyway, those meetings go really long, so sorry to keep you guys waiting. Had some business to take care of. We will then take care of that business here publicly. Thank everybody to be here. All right. Good.
I guess.
We can take a photo on this.
Okay.
Paul took a photo.
All right. Okay, so um for for the record, we are reconvening uh back into regular session at six eighteen uh P M. Uh item eight on the agenda is reorganizing the city council. Eight A is selecting the mayor for a one year term and eight B is selecting the mayor pro temp for a one year term. The chair would entertain the motion to select the mayor for a one year term. I nominate David Kay Lee for another one year term.
Two.
The motion is second to nominate myself as the for a one year term. Uh any comments?
I would I would like to add a comment. And I've told you this, I I think that you uh serve the city well. I think that uh your your the amount of knowledge you have from your time on council uh is invaluable to the position of mayor. I think that the that the mayor council relationship is good. I think the mayor staff relationship is good. Um I think that um as I said, that that you don't seek out conflict, but you're also not afraid of it. And I think that that there's um your your involvement in the community and investment in the community personally and professionally. I think that all those things give you uh just the right set of skills and personality to to continue to serve in this role. I agree. I thought if I could third the motion.
No, you guys have been uh meant so much to me and and being able to to sit here and and be selected um is it's humbling and uh I appreciate your support. I really do. It's a um it's something that I think in some levels, people aspire to do things um and a lot of times, the more you want to do a thing, the less people are willing to let you do the thing. And so it's one of those, if you love something, you have to set it free. And so I realize that uh this is a this is a privilege. Um and I have a lot of responsibility to represent the staff, you and the council. Um and so I I try to do that to represent us, not to represent me. So again, I appreciate that.
And David, I feel like we're setting up the city for a great opportunity ahead. Um and your leadership has been a big part of that. So really, really appreciate your service.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all. All right, so we have a motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Item two, selecting the mayor pro temp. Chair would entertain nomination for mayor pro temp.
I'll make a motion to nominate John Holmes as mayor pro temp.
Check it. We have a motion of second to nominate John Holmes as mayor pro temp. Any comments or questions?
I I would add a comment in John too. I think that his years on council and his years before that on planning and zoning um have have certainly contributed to his role um as mayor pro pro temp. I think that his appointment to the E D C uh has been helpful as we've tried to uh kind of be in step with those with the council and the E D C as far as vision goes and and the business of the E D C. I I think John has done a fantastic job over the last couple of years and I support him to continue doing that.
Thank you so much.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, I I I'll add to it. I really appreciate John. Um he's um again, kind of the same thing. Uh he's not afraid of conflict, but he doesn't seek it out and um it's really nice. So you know, sometimes we'll have something on an agenda packet or something and John will shoot me a text or give me a call or we'll have a meeting and talk about it. And he just brings a unique perspective. It's always good to have somebody who's sitting there trying to think outside of their box, sit in your shoes and and ask you, you know, and ask me personal questions um as well. Um and so it's really, it's really good. And I I will say I've known John since like probably junior high to high school when they moved here from, was it Marlin or?
Marlin.
Marlin. What are they doing over there now? But one of the things I've always appreciated about John is if John wants to, John can capture the room. He's got a charisma and uh he's able to work the crowd and it's great to have people on council that can do that. Uh people that be in the city that can do it because it there's a lot of confidence in the city as citizens if the council members represent well and all of you represent well. And and as mayor pro temp, I really appreciate when you're able to stand in for me um and work that crowd. You do a great job.
Runs a very efficient meeting too.
Yes, very efficient. Call the question, right? All right, all in favor for John for mayor pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Also passes unanimously. Again, thank you, guys. Uh next item is hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances to establish a municipal court of record in the city of Belton. This is the follow-on to the election canvassing that we just did. Uh Mr. Mike.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I like my subtitle there. I'll brag on myself there. We're it's a transformation to a municipal court of record that we're doing tonight um with the help of citizens, which is amazing. So um what we're talking about tonight is chapter two of our Code of Ordinances. Um that code relates specifically to our municipal court. Um to become a court of record, we have to amend that amend that code, which we'll talk about soon. And again, um voters of um we had to clear up a city charter conflict and voters approved that change at the last election. So why do we want to be a court of record? Well, first, the court becomes kind of a bit more professional. I think Judge Lee himself will say he will have to bite his tongue a little harder. Um and I say that with all love to Judge Lee. It also will will also have a better recordings of our proceedings in the court. Um those will be recorded um through video equipment we'll talk about. And then kind of a big thing, it's even though I have a third here, the big thing is um um appeals and in a court of record can only be done based upon procedural issues, not I didn't like the way the judge ruled, so I'm going to to county. Um which you could do under just our old court of record status. Now, under municipal um court of record, we you can't do it that way. It has to be a procedural issue itself um to appeal. Um so there are several sections of code that we need to change. The first one of that is section two forty-six. This officially titles our new court to the municipal court of record in the city of Belton. That takes place immediately upon passage of this ordinance. Um two forty-seven um spells out all of the jurisdiction that the municipal court of record will have. Um those are all listed in state code um and and we've agreed to to take that into our court of record. Section two forty-eight um does a few things. So first, it lists the duties of our presiding judge. Um the ordinance by law has to name the the presiding judge in this ordinance, and that is Steve Lee. Um has been our municipal judge for many years and still wants to serve. Um the other thing that had to, we had to fix the state law requires a municipal judge in a court of record to have a fixed term of either two years or four. Um our previous charter said the term could not be fixed, period. That's what it said in the city charter and that's what we needed to do. That was the conflict that we had with our charter. So now that that's been changed we'll have fixed terms for the judges. It'll be a two-year term, May thirteen of twenty twenty-five to May twelve of twenty twenty-seven. Go back, let me go back here. Judge Lee, wait, everybody can see you. So they they know who you are. Yeah, reluctantly, yeah. That's funny. Good one. Um our associate judge is is listed in section two forty-nine. That's Jasmine Rios Harding. Jasmine. That's that's she's our associate judge um has been now for a year now, I believe. That's amazing. Um the new contract will also have a two-year term uh for the associate judge. Um moving on to section two fifty, uh we have to also by ordinance, name our court administrator. That's Lacretia Van de Plas. There she is there. Um words in my building, please come say hello. Um and then this section also lists some of those things specifically related to a a court reporter. So there's two options that are spelled out in this ordinance. Um one, the city manager can appoint a court reporter or must appoint a court reporter. But that does not necessarily mean that we have to have someone who is at physically present at all of the uh court proceedings and literally transcribing all of the words like you would see uh at county. The option that we are going with, as it's allowed by ordinance, is to to make video recordings of all the per court proceedings. And we have to keep those for twenty days beyond the last hearing thing, whatever, that kind of thing. Um and then if a case is appealed, then we would call the court reporter to actually make it to to scram, transcribe those proceedings. Um that and that's that's the option that's obviously less expensive and it'll work well for our court. Uh we don't expect that many appeals. Um so so that's the the avenue that we're going, but but that's specifically listed in this ordinance. Section two fifty-one is really just a renumbering of of the code that referenced our special revenue fund for municipal court technology money. Twenty-two is really again on just renumbering our building security fund reference. So our recommendation is that city council approve these amendments to our code of ordinances to establish the municipal municipal court of record in the city of Belton. Before I go, Carmen Garcia is our prosecutor. We're going to talk about a bit. You can wave, please. Thank you so you need it because we're going to talk about her just a minute. Um she's not specifically listed in this ordinance, but um I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I do have one question with and this is not a shot at our our board, Chris Brown on the back, but I've I know how video recordings sometimes don't record. Is there a fallback in these laws and ordinances that allow them to appeal to the county and just start over kind of like it is now or what happens in that situation?
Uh so Chris will make sure that that never happened. Hundred percent of the time.
Ready set, ready to go.
But yes, what would happen, I I I would, I it would be I would likely suppose that would be a procedural issue that they would appeal.
Okay.
And then it would go to if I'm not right there, Judge, please tell.
It's kind of the only thing I didn't couldn't find on the just what happens if it doesn't report, so.
Yeah, we're required to record. Anything else?
Yeah, all the technology is already in place. Chris has it all set up. We're ready to go and upon adoption by the council of this ordinance.
I move the approval.
There's a public hearing, so.
Oh, yeah, we'll do, yeah, but we'll, all right, so.
All right, so um this is where we get to pause and let you guys uh let us know what you think. If anyone wishes to speak uh in favor or in opposition of this ordinance, we're now opening the floor for public comments. If you have comments, you got up to three minutes. You can bank those three minutes. All right, so everybody's banking their three minutes. No public comments. We will now close the floor and reconvene. And I think I started hearing a motion.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no, we can, we can.
I move we approve of ordinance amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances to establish a municipal court of record uh for city.
Second.
So we have motion of second to approve the ordinance amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances. Uh any other comments or questions before we vote? They're being done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Item ten, consider the approval of contracts and administration and administration of the oath of office for the following. Drum roll, please. It's uh just what we just talked about. So uh first one is presiding judge of the municipal court of record to the city of Belton. The second one is the associate judge of the municipal court of record in the city of Belton. And C is assistant city attorney municipal prosecutor of the municipal 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 court of record in the city of Belton and Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is that final step. Um we took the opportunity to to um do prepare these new contracts with just new terms, the new two-year terms uh for for Judge Lee, um Jasmine Rios Harding and our prosecutor, Farman Garcia. Um they've all agreed to serve for another two-year term, which is very exciting. I'm pleased to 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 announce to you. Um I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the contracts.
Any comments or questions? All right, so this being a approval of contracts and then administration of oath, I would assume we we need to approve these and I think we can enact all three of these in one motion.
I move we approve the contracts listed in number ten.
Second, we have a motion of second to um approve the contracts listed. Uh any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
As you unanimously now administration of the oath of office.
Honored to administer the oath of office. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Where I say my name, you say your name. I Amy Casey do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city clerk uh the state of Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect and defend the constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So how congratulations.
Thank you so much for serving the city and the citizens. We appreciate your service. Uh usually on game day, you probably don't have a lot of fans in the room, but uh we appreciate the work that you do. All right. Item eleven, presentation of the youth advisory commission, end of year report. Thank you, guys, for patiently waiting. I thought about accelerating this one and doing the report first. But um anyway, you got some civic experience, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Council. Welcome, Mr. Luther. Uh tonight, our this is the last official duty of this year's uh youth advisory commission. Most of them will be moving on to college, not all of them, but most of them will move on to college. They're going to share a little end of year recap for you. And at the end, they'll be answering any questions. If you want to give them any piece of advice before they go off to college, you're welcome to do so with that. So who our first figure is the board chair, which is Ms. Carol Woods.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Carol Woods. I am a junior and I am the youth advisory commission chair. Um so for our basic or for our Capitol trip. Right. We have that on. So we were able to make a trip out to the Capitol, a couple of us from the youth advisory commission. We were able to have a lunch with the state representative Hugh Shine and we got to tour the Capitol and meet a lot of the different representatives and legislators at the Capitol. Um it was a really great experience and I was really grateful that we were able to um take everybody out there and, you know, have that experience as uh youth in government.
Very cool.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Veda. I'm the historian. Um at the beginning of the year, we had a basic training, a basic leadership training um where we got to um hear from city manager Sam Listy, assistant city manager Matt Bates and parks board member Diane Ring. Um so they gave us some encouragement for leadership in the first part of the day. In the second part of the day, we planned out our Yak year. We also got to attend the Yak Summit in Beaumont, Texas. Um it was a week and full of training and workshops to better our leadership skills.
Hi, my name is Finn. I'm a senior at Belton High School. Um so um event staff will often ask for volunteers at um some of the events um like Christmas on the Chisholm Trail or the father-daughter dance. There's multiple that are not listed, but like, hey, um and um we are uh just here to make sure that those events uh go along smoothly and we're always here to help.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Gantivara. I'm Belton High School. I am the vice chair of the Youth Advisor Commission. Um the first thing I'll be speaking about is our first teen night. We were very excited to see a lot of students from Belton High School come out um Lake Belton and Academy and many other schools coming out for our teen night. It was a lot of fun, a lot of singing, a lot of dancing. And we're excited to do our next one next year. And then the second thing I'll be going over is um our time with the seniors this year. This year, we had our trivia night, uh our trivia night with them and I had the honor, you know, of winning two years in a row back to back with my team. And then um we also did music bingo, which was later on in our year and it was a lot of fun. So we're excited to have the same events next year and we love spending time with our seniors.
Yeah, our senior citizens. Yeah.
And the final event that we're speaking about is One Community, One Day. This is by far my favorite event that we do at Youth Advisory Commission because we have so many people come out and visit and help out to clean up houses that sign up for yard work or service to be done. This year, we had fifteen successful projects over two weekends and we had over a hundred and sixty volunteers that participated in total.
Thank y'all very much.
Quick, quick comment and then a question. So the comment is um uh former mayor, uh Marion Grayson kind of brought this to the city and we we really thank her for doing that and really love that you guys are plugging in. If you don't mind, just sharing with us, what's your plan for next year? I mean, if you're going on to college or whatever, we'd like to know just a little bit. I think if that's okay.
Hi, um I'll be going to Stephen and Austin and I'll be uh majoring in art education.
Awesome. Hackham Jacks, is that right? Something. Excellent. Accent Jacks, sorry, yeah.
Uh I will be going to Norwich University on Army ROTC scholarship.
All right.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
My name's Madison. I serve as a secretary for the the Youth Advisory Commission. And I'll be attending the University of Texas at Arlington and then transferring me into Austin to study psychology.
Uh my name is Tatum. I'll be attending Prairie Valley University. I'll be majoring in communication.
Awesome.
I plan on going to College Station and getting my expedition into.
I think they're underclass.
Okay, awesome. Very much.
Yeah.
Good luck in the next chapter.
Yeah.
All right. Items twelve through fourteen are consent agenda. These can be enacted by a single motion or that we can pull them off if any uh member of the council wishes to do so. I'll read them all and if you choose to make a motion for it or pull one of those off, uh we'll do that at the end of my reading. Item twelve is uh adopting the minutes of the previous council meetings for April twenty-second uh city council and the April twenty-ninth special call city council meetings. Item thirteen is adopting resolution authorizing the release of the Bel city of Belton's E T J of approximately two point seven acres owned by Jeff Poole and situated in abstract five-five-four of the F Madrigal survey twenty-four located generally east of Toll Bridge Road and north of Elmer King Road. And item fourteen is adopting an ordinance adding Tyler Ridge, Belton approximately a hundred and thirteen point four acres located generally east of approximately a hundred and thirteen point four acres located generally east of Hubbard Branch Edition on FM four thirty six Holland Road uh to the city of Belton's E T J. Chair with entertaining motions or we need to remove?
Move to for agenda is twelve through fourteen.
Second, we have a motion of second to adopt uh items twelve through fourteen, any comments before we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously, that is the end. Let's finish. Thank you, guys. Right.